Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Martin County School Board Workshop to order. Can we please rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Falls, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Moriarty?
Here.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Here.
Mrs. Russell?
Here.
Mrs. Pritchett?
Here.
Hey, Board Information Share. Do any Board members have anything they'd like to share?
Chair Pritchett, I just wanted to ask about the committee assignments. When are we taking that up? Do you know? I'm just not sure which committees I'm supposed to be serving on. I remember we had kind of pushed that back. Is there a time when we're taking that up? I just don't know which committees I'm supposed to be on.
Well, we talked about bringing the process of the, remember in November or December, I guess it was, we talked about bringing the process back for how the committees are selected and talking about that. But I thought we, I thought it was remaining the same for this year, and then we would have a new process in place for the November, or December, I guess, would be December of this year, right? So we probably need to have, add it to a workshop of some sort as an agenda item?
Ms. Falls, do you want to send out to Dr. Moriarty the committees that he was selected for? And if anyone else has any questions, maybe just send them to all of us?
He can, you can also go to our website as well, because each one of us, we have our picture and then our information up there. So for you, you're on Stewart-Barton Chamber of Commerce Boundary Advisory Committee, Code of Student Conduct Committee, and then School Calendar Committee.
Okay, and then we're going to review the process maybe closer to the date of, like at the end of the year? That we're thinking, or?
Is it a policy that we use, or is it a, just has been past practice? I don't know. I mean, it's been that way as long as I've been on the board, but I don't, I'm happy to take a, I don't mind taking a look at it. Doing it, my, we talked about doing it similar to how like the county does it. They discuss them at their meeting, okay, this is, these are the committees, who would like to do it? And then we're collectively making the decision, as opposed to...
Ms. Roberts?
Thank you.
So if we're just doing process and we're not reassigning, as long as it gets done before, as long as it gets on a workshop where we can discuss the process before fall time, we'll be fine, because it doesn't happen again until for the next calendar year.
Sounds good. Everybody good with that? Okay.
Yeah, just make sure that it's not in policy somewhere, because then it takes three months to do it. So we just need to build in that timeline in case.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Anyone else have something to share? Okay. A public comment. I have one public comment. I just have to read this. I apologize, but that's what I have to do. Citizen input is vital to the improvement of our district. Most times, your remarks may be listened to without comment from the Board members or superintendent. This does not mean they are heard with any less intensity or concern. Where appropriate, the superintendent and staff will investigate your comments and report back to you and the Board with an answer. We thank you for taking the time and having the concern to make our district better. Your presentation to the Board should not exceed three minutes. Letters or statements from others not present can be given to our clerk, who will be sure that each school board member and the superintendent receive a copy. To keep our records straight and authentic, our policy does not permit you to read the statements of others into the record. I have Angela Roberts.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Administrators, my name is Angie Roberts. I've devoted 36 years to educating the next generation. 27 years of that, I have proudly served in this district. In 2019, 2020, I was honored to represent our district as Martin County's Teacher of the Year. It was a challenging time to be a teacher, as that was the COVID shutdown year. During that time, I recognized the importance of being a champion and a voice for teachers. To that end, I am here tonight to address some terribly troubling proposed contract language that will most negatively impact me and many other teachers who are technically retired, but continue to work through the FRS drop program. Two months ago, this conversation wasn't even on the horizon. But now, with little time to make such a major life decision, I'm being forced to make two choices. One, retire in three months from a job that I have loved and devoted my life to, or to lose the insurance subsidy for life that I was promised since being hired in 1998. With either choice, I will lose life-sustaining income. I can understand your choice to stop this benefit for new hires or teachers in their first 10 years, but to discontinue it for those of us who are already in the retirement phase and have dedicated the best years of our lives, our loyalty and our service to this district, is, in my opinion, an unfair labor practice, and more importantly, a show of disregard for our health and welfare by the very district that we have faithfully and passionately served. Retire now or lose your subsidy doesn't really feel like a choice to me. It feels like an ultimatum to force us out. We counted on this subsidy when we made decisions regarding our retirement and the choice to enter drop. The choices you make regarding this subsidy will change the climate of this district. People will either view this Board as a group of thoughtful, compassionate decision-makers who understand that the good and fair treatment of its workforce directly impacts productivity and success, or they may see you as a calloused group of business people who put budget before ethics and who wrongly strip their elder employees of promised benefits. You will make news either way, and your decision will be seen and felt by our workforce and by the larger community. We, the tenured teachers, have been the torchbearers, the mentors, the backbone, and it was our blood, sweat and tears that made this district the treasure that it is today. Now, we're counting on you to stand with us and keep the promise that we were given. Let us retire with dignity, peace of mind, and the allocations that we've earned through service. I humbly ask that you not vote this proposal into fruition. Surely, there's a more ethical way to reduce expenses. I thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Carter Morrison with Budget Workshop Number Two.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Superintendent, members of staff, community, and those who are watching us over the world wide web this afternoon. Welcome you to Budget Workshop Number Two. And this Budget Workshop today is a little bit of an update to information presented last month when we met at the first Budget Workshop Number One. With respect to the agenda this afternoon, again, we have moved the needle a little bit in discussing and moving through our budget development process that I'll go over with you in a moment. We'll look at the updated trend data for the unweighted FTE, talk about what next year's projections look like, the impact of, currently what the impact is in the budget based on our October count, which has been finalized and published by the Department of Education, and talk a little bit about some internal initiatives that we have undertaken with respect to maximizing and making sure that we're getting best pricing through the purchasing department. So, looking at Slide Number Three, where we are with respect to the budget cycle, the arrow is now pointing on discretionary and categorical funds allocated. That work has actually been done based off the estimated February FTE for the schools. That has been done and is currently on my desk, being reviewed before we infuse that into the system for the next fiscal year. On Slide Number Four, looking at the summary of unweighted FTE as of Survey Two in October, this has now been updated with the final numbers for the third calculation. If you look to the right, you will see the red circle. When we last met, that number was still 1374.75 and had roughly an $18 million price tag to it. It has been updated and finalized by the Department of Education. So you can see that scholarships now, in Martin County School District, the FTE, unweighted FTE is now 2,231.75 FTE, which, just as a talking point, is larger than any of your high schools. So, we continue to see that sector of our, of education continue to grow. So overall, when you were to, if you were to look at it, the entire school district FTE is seven, has grown by 722.85 FTE. But traditionals, that has not changed since we last met, at 109.53 FTE. Looking at the next slide, Number Five, we look at the, again, the price tag. You can see the dramatic rise in the scholarship funding. And when we last met, it was $18.6 million, has now risen to about $20.9 million. And I'll go through another slide that details all of that, but you can see that there's a significant increase in our FES scholarship population. This next slide, on Slide Number Six, is, was extracted from the proposed committee bill, from the pre-K Budget 2501, which is the House side of the proposals. We received these proposals earlier this week, so we will have that update for you at the next Budget Workshop that compares the Senate versus the House and potential implications of some of the proposals in both chambers. But I wanted to give the Board a sense of the statewide, the history of the FES, plus what they are predicting moving forward. So if you were to compare 2324, at 220,964 FTE. For the current year's, 356,628.75 FTE. That's approximately another 135,664.75 FTE statewide, or a 61.4% increase. And in the verbiage that you see below the chart for 2526 statewide, they're also increasing that by another 89,000, or roughly about a 25% increase in FES. This is statewide. Now, we've seen different proposals from the House and the Senate, which I will go over with you at the next meeting, that handle the FES a little bit different, but for our local purposes, I will show you that we've always excluded that from our budget to help protect us, because that is a penny, that, those are dollars that we would, we would not see coming, flowing through Martin County School District. The next slide looks at the DOE database. And looking at our 2526 projected FTE and our submission to the state, this was submitted to the state on March the 5th, based on the, our internal FTE, A.T. met. And as a, as a team, we looked at the historical data, looking at the losses which you have in front of you in what I'm going to call the big chart. That shows historically that for the last 10 years, we literally have not grown in the traditional public school sector. So we took that into consideration. And in the summary of the chart to the right, in the colored area, you can see that traditional in October was 16, excluding virtual, 16046.77. Projection is 15837.75, or a decrease of 209.02. As I mentioned at our last meeting, every single model that we looked at in the state's database predicted a decrease and further expansion of the FES or scholarship program. So, charters, we did project a, an increase in charters. The Board might recall that we lifted the cap on the Clark Advanced Learning Center, as well as Indian Town High School. We've also added some FTE there for some growth out in Indian Town. And scholarships, as you can see, is a big number at 5, 52.50. We just pretty much picked the biggest number that we could in order to try to protect ourselves. So updating the graphical representation, again, you can see the regression. And in the blue, in the orange bars, that the traditional schools have been losing FTE. And the scholarships and charters are, have an inverse relationship in terms that they are growing. So, based on the third FEFP calculation, there are some major components that we just need to go over. So in the second calculation, is after the legislative session is done, and the millages, excuse me, the property tax rules are certified to the Department of Education, and they set your budget. But the budget includes for us, at the statewide level, charters, and it also includes, includes the FES. Now, I will say that in the Senate bill, they tried to separate that out as a separate categorical, which kind of helps us to separate out that. But you can see the FTE of 19,841.84 is all-inclusive. So the weighted portion of that is 2240212. The base student allocation remains the same, that is, the rate at which the state pays for each unweighted FTE. The comparative wage factor, or CWF, attempts to recognize the difference between the cost of living between one school district and the other. If you think of the old economic market basket of goods comparison, and then you come up with your base funding. Now, because the FES is included in there and the FTE looks higher, if you look on the increased/decreased column, you can see that there's an increase in the, in the categoricals of about $1.7 million. Then you deduct your required local effort, that is, the portion of funds that are generated when we come before you under two-trim hearings, one in July and one in September, to levy local taxes, so they take a credit against that. So, and then, of course, we get into adjustments. So prior year adjustments, $53,000 could be adjustments that they're making for different reasons in the FEFP. In not this district, in past districts, when we had penalties for class size, you would see adjustments for that. You would see maybe overpayments were made, they would make those minor adjustments to your, to your FEFP. But the big one below that, proration to appropriation, 1,421,074. So, in, when the budget is set at the beginning of the year, the General Appropriations Act caps the budget. This is how much the state budget is going to be for FEFP. In that budget, it was projected to have 3.10 million FTE. However, on the third count, there was more, more FTE than what, than what was in the original budget, 3.181. So, of course, they had to prorate down that amount of money, that deficit. So our share of that deficit was 1,421,074. The next line to the bottom says, "Education stabilization allocation." That was a special, a special part of the legislature in 2324, that what they do is, if your total funds per FTE in the second calc, which is your budget, after you do your October count, if your total funds for FTE go down, then the state makes up that difference in, in funding because of that FTE change. So that is a stabilization allocation that they give you for fluctuations in FTE based primarily because of the impact of the FES or the scholarships. Our share this year was 624,621. Now, we're kind of looking at legislation with bated breath, because in the House's proposal for next year, they completely repeal that. So said another way, if we did not have that, those funds, then we would be having to cut another 624,000 theoretically out of our budget. The Senate actually keeps it in, in, in there, but they treat that, and they actually add another $50 million to that amount for next year to keep it at an impressed of about $250 million. So, again, when, when we meet next time, we'll go through the various legislative pieces from both chambers, but I wanted to point out how critical that is at this, at this point. So, we're up at about 1,164, before we flip the page to Slide 11. So we carry forward that, that million-dollar increase, and then we have a prior year scholarship adjustment of about $246,000. Again, this could be a recovery from scholarship monies paid to parents and things of that nature. And then the big adjustment comes in red. In the second calculation, as I mentioned, we had an adjustment out of our budget of $18.6 million. That rose to $20.9 million, so that cut another 2.2 million, almost 2.3 million dollars out. But as I mentioned before, right below that, where you see adjusted net state FEFP of 11,117,704 in the 2425 second FEFP calculation, that's the number we budgeted for as F. So we did not include that $18 million in, in our budget. So, the adjustment down to, in the third calc, will go to 10.155 million, or a decrease of about 962,000. Class size reduction, reduced by $91,000. So the net total state funding is a million, $1,53637 less. However, with, with the budgetary processes that, and systems that we have in place, we typically reserve those funds for any, any loss of FTE that may come during, during the fiscal year. What we're currently doing now is looking at the net effect. However, we're divvying up between, okay, how much did the charters go up in particular, and how much did we go down, which would produce that net effect of a million dollars? So, we're working through that, my staff and I, right now, to post those adjustments in the budget. Any questions so far? Switching gears now, as you are aware, we're always looking to make sure that we're appropriately and maximizing our efficiency with respect to our, how we spend our dollars. Just wanted to give the Board a quick update on some initiatives that the purchasing department has been undergoing, and looking at some of the purchases, that some of them actually have been Board approved. But subsequent to Board approval, we want to make sure that we're getting the best, the best, the best deal in town, so to speak. So we had a tree removal project and an audiovisual project. Those two, we got quotes from duly authorized and awarded vendors. And subsequently, we were able to save on those two projects, $2,700 and $34,515 respectively. On a high school track resurfacing project, what we were able to do is peel off a portion of the work and be able to, to quote that separately. And as a result of that, we were able to save over $283,000 from, from that award. Finally, a swale and drainage improvement project, we, again, we also had a quote from an alternative vendor, which was duly authorized under, on a publicly awarded bid, and we were able to save $14,860. So, just running total so far, we have about $335,414. We are working on other initiatives that we will bring forward next time. We do have, I let the cat out of the bag, so to speak. We are working on a district-wide lawn maintenance contract. We probably will have to phase it in over time, but we do, we are seeing some immediate savings to some of the locations that we have already received a quote for. We'll update the Board on that. And per the superintendent's direction, we will be putting those on our website to keep a running total for the public to see what we're, what we're undertaking to save. The next one is an update on the Reprographics Department. We have instituted a software program that has been able to streamline our operations with respect to the Reprographics Department. All the credit goes to Jeff Carver and his, and his team down there. They have instituted, registered over 500 users district-wide for this process. Every desktop, the software icon appears on everybody's desktop for who's registered for this program. We've processed to the date of printing of this about 1,200 orders and delivery since the implementation of this program. The target is by the end of this month, that all schools will be onboard and utilizing that software and that program. I just put a little bit of a feedback from a principal on there, that she loves the Print Shop Pro. They can see all the copies and the prices before they actually get approved. So that beefs up our internal controls, helps them with their budget. They can see exactly how much the order is going to cost before that is put through. And we're able to go back and have historical data on pricing and able to cost things out appropriately. You said I was able to prevent a $2,200 mistake by seeing it first. I like that I can, we can get errors corrected ASAP when copies don't come correctly or on time. So that's the customer service piece that we're working on. And for the Reprographics Department, we are seeing improvements in that, and thank the superintendent and the Board for supporting that initiative as we worked our way through, through that. That, Madam Chair, I believe concludes this afternoon's budget update. As I mentioned, we'll be back next month with a comparison of the state, excuse me, the Senate versus House, House bills, and talk about some of the legislation, and bring forward some of the departmental savings and things that we've been working on behind this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do I have any question? No?
Thank you.
Surprise. I neglected to read the addendum to the agenda. Items updated, 6.15, advertising and commercial activities. And then items removed, 5.01, school board budget, which will come up in our workshop next month. Hey, we're going to go to school board policies. Does anyone have any public comments regarding the school board policies? Open to the Board. Vote on them.
I'm sorry, I do have some of those policies.
Okay.
Just a few of them.
Sure.
The 0131, technical corrections. Technical corrections, I noticed on the technical correction, under superintendent, on four of five. It talks about the superintendent with a big S or the superintendent with a small s would imply the ability to delegate. And I believe that what we've been doing is that the large S gives us the ability to delegate
delegate and the small S does not give us the, we're backwards. Is that correct, Ms. Falls? One gives us the, one implies a delegation and the other one doesn't? So in our existing policy, anytime we say the word superintendent, big S, little s, anything, it always means the superintendent can delegate. Okay, all right. The next one is 0131.1. Point one, technical corrections. The recommendation is to select the first option, which would have the school board making technical corrections as resolutions every time? That's what we do now. For technical corrections, is that what we want to do or do we want the superintendent to be able to take care of a technical correction? If it's technical in nature, which is, refers to consolidation of sections, transfer of sections, combining, dividing sections, renumbering chapters, titles, grammatical, typographical errors, alterations or omissions? I mean, do we really want every time we have a, oh, we renumbered these paragraphs incorrectly, it's got to come back for a resolution?
I don't think that that necessary. To me, those are just scrupulous errors or like simple things, but if you're going to delete or alter, yes, I do.
Okay, so, but I'm talking grammatical or typographical error. So the way that it's written here, by adopting this, it would mean that if we have renumbered something wrong or we have a typographical error, it's got to come back for a resolution.
I'm fine with that not being a part of it.
So do we want to delete the piece that talks about, delete the line that says alterations and omissions? To keep all the definition the same for technical except alterations or omissions? That was where I was going with it. That I'm okay with the consolidation of a section, transfers a section, combining, dividing sections, renumbering sections, chapters, titles, corrections or additions for grammatical or typographical errors? And, and the updating of names of individuals who serve as compliance officers, et cetera? But the piece I would have an issue with calling technical, and I think needs the board's permission, is alterations or omissions. So I think if you wanted to use the second paragraph and give the superintendent the authority to do technical corrections, my preference would be to delete the words alterations and omissions and make everything else a technical correction.
Yeah, and I would just want to run that by the attorney before we make changes like that. But yes, let's, if that, I'm fine with it as long as the attorney says it's good.
Okay. Let's see, 164.
Wait. Okay. 6.05.
016, oh, 6.05, yeah. This is, do we currently do a seven-day publication notice for workshops?
The only thing less is an emergency. Or I guess, even a special requires seven days. The only thing that's less than seven days is an emergency meeting.
Okay, so that's fine. And then if you go to agendas at 165.1.
6.07.
Page two. Letter B says, "The agenda for each regular meeting shall be demailed or delivered to each board member." Are we considering delivery to be electronic delivery? Generally, the agenda should be mailed no later than seven days prior to the meeting or delivered, so as soon as possible to provide time for studying the agenda by the member.
I know this is old language because there were, I know when I first came on the board, there were board members that had this, someone from the school district hand deliver a printed agenda to their home.
Right, and that, that's what I'm...
Do we, I'm, I, I'm, I don't even know about the delivery. The fact that it's posted into Board Docs where it's accessible by me and the public, I've never even had one emailed unless it's prior to the seven days to discuss it with the superintendent.
Can we send that one back to check it with the? I mean, I think as long as every board member has access to it. Yeah, I understand that. But I, I, I think at the very least, they need to say that delivery can be electronic or something along those lines. I, I think the reason it's in here is because there are 67 counties and our board operates quite differently than many other boards, and I think it's covering all the bases. So I think for us, we don't need to have it in there, but I understand why it is in there. Dr. Moriarty, did you want to say something?
No, I agree with, I agree with Ms. Roberts.
Okay.
Would, would the board be opposed for us to just add electronic format into there without having to send it to the attorney for review? I, I just feel like that's an easy add without incurring a...
It could just say electronically delivered.
Well, it just says, it's, it doesn't call out how you're going to deliver it. So if, I don't, I don't prefer a printed agenda. I can look at it on my laptop, but some board members may. So you either get it delivered in the method that you would like it delivered, whether it's a printed agenda or it is a electronic agenda. I mean...
We, we don't have them delivered at all. I mean, I don't, I don't get it, I mean, they're on the Board Docs and that's where I access them, but they're not mailed, electronic mailed or delivered in any way.
Well, they are uploaded and basically delivered to your Board Docs, and that's what you have access to, very similar to email, right? I consider that delivered. Once it's uploaded and available to us, I consider that delivered. Do you, do you agree?
I'm looking at the language that they crossed out that includes electronic format up in the language above, and I'm just wondering why. I don't know, I feel like Neola didn't do a very good job on this.
So Mrs. Falls pointed out, A, the agenda along with any meeting materials available in electronic form excluding confidential or exempt information shall be published on the board's website before the event and shall include any recommendations of the superintendent. So the board's website, meaning your Board Docs, or printed for you when you meet with me prior to the board meeting. I don't know if A suffices for you or if you want some additional change, we'll go with whatever the pleasure of the board. I just don't feel like we should need to send this all the way back to Neola.
I, I guess what I'm asking for is under B, where it says shall be mailed or delivered after the word delivered, if we put in parentheses, including electronically. And just did that, then it is kind of clear because it's, yeah, I don't even know why the paragraph B is even there. I don't, it doesn't make any sense.
We just take out B.
Well, they just added B, so I mean, that seems like a little...
Right, but A covers it.
Is the board agreeable to just adding electronically in parentheses?
I'm fine with it. It's semantics in my mind. It's, it's delivered is delivered regardless of how you deliver it. I'm fine with either way.
Yes, okay. Yes, is that okay to include it then? Okay. Thank you. And that's all I had, thank you. Thank you. Except we are going to discuss the 6561, correct? So we are open for discussion on 6561. Anyone? No? Go ahead. So this is the retiree health insurance for employees retiring after July 1, 2025. And I know that we have passed the policy that is dealing with the people who are retiring before July 1, 2025, which is in pretty much in three months. And we've already taken care of that. That's already for the people who are either currently retired or retiring before that end of the year. What this is saying now is, the way this policy is, it's saying that we will contribute until June 30... Correct?
Yes.
So if you retire before you're Medicare eligible, you will continue to get something until 2038, which is 13 years from now, right? And knowing that, so 13 years from 65 means it affects somebody who was less than 42 years old when, for this piece, right?
Yes.
Less than 42 right now. And it also means since we had the notification and we changed that policy 10 years ago, when it came out of the contract and went into policy, it means that we're talking about anybody who was 32 years old. If I take the 42-year-old now, 10 years ago, that 42-year-old was 32 years old? 42 minus 10 is 32. So we're talking about people who are 32 years old. So they got 10 years of notice and we're giving them another 13 years. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then the only other real change we're doing is we're changing the piece that has to do with the health insurance subsidy.
Correct, yes.
Correct? And I don't know if any, if all the board is okay with that or if they had any, wanted to discuss it any further? No? Yes, not. No, it just says after.
Does the media, people need any time?
Does the media need any time to set up anything?
We have to wait 19 minutes, don't we?
We do have to wait?
Yes, if it says 5 o'clock, right?
Okay.
Yeah, it's advertised as 5 o'clock, so we have to wait. Or does it? Oh, immediately following. Okay, good, good. Yes, perfect.
All right, so I'm going to call this second meeting of the special workshop for the Martin County School Board. And the addendum to the agenda, I have another one here, hold on. Is items updated, 3.1 employee benefits insurance final offer with the district's preferred carrier Cigna for fully insured medical and pharmacy RFP. Right?
Okay. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Maine, Don Calderon, Director of Risk Management.
Hang on, we need a, we need a motion, sorry, Don.
I'm sorry.
We need a motion in a second.
I move approval to approve the agenda.
Motion by Ms. Powers, second by Ms. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Proceed.
Before we start. Good afternoon, Don Calderon, Director of Risk Management, Employee Benefits, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Maine. Alongside me is Senior Benefits Consultant Dustin Keen, who is a little under the weather today, but he's here. We wanted to make sure you know that he, he's still with us. And alongside me is our benefits consultant, Gabrielle Swain. So as you recall, we were here a week ago, the March 25th board meeting, where the board directed staff to engage the Garen group to finalize the final offer with the preferred carrier of the fully insured medical and pharmacy RFP. And that preferred carrier was Cigna. So there was several items that the Garen group went back to Cigna to negotiate following that board meeting. And Gabrielle is going to present the final offer. But those three items were that we wanted Cigna, the preferred carrier, to match the current benefit for the advanced imaging benefit, which if you recall, right now, under the HMO plan, is a $350 copay. Under the best and final offer from Cigna, it was a calendar year deductible, then 20% coinsurance, and then $350 copay. And then the other item that the Garen group went to Cigna to discuss was they had heard our conversation that we had about the board in years past has traditionally picked up that difference between the high deductible health plan employee-only cost and the $6,500, which is what the board's contribution is towards active employee insurance. And they went back to Cigna and said, okay, we see that your best and final offer was a little bit more than $6,500 a year. Can you get that closer to $6,500, which comes out to $541.67 a month? And then also, just a little housekeeping thing from an administrative standpoint, if they can go back and change the odd pennies to even pennies for payroll calculations, it's just a little bit easier for us to work with the payroll department when we administer those benefits. So I'm going to hand it off to Gabrielle, and she's going to present Cigna's final
Hello. So the good news is that Cigna was able to do all of the things that were asked of them. So they did match your current advanced imaging copay, so it is only going to be $350, which matches what you currently have and no longer subject to the deductible or the coinsurance. They were able to lower the high deductible health plan to $541.66. That's a savings to the board of over $33,000. And they made all the rates have even pennies. The next page is a summary of what we looked at last time. You'll notice the 7.9% increase. But if we go to the following page, this is the negotiated response that we went back to. So you'll notice the 350 copay is in a blue box because that has been improved and changed. You'll see the $541.66, the 7.7% overall increase. And now the high deductible health plan, the per-pay deduction would be zero based on the 6,500 annually. Your caveats remain the same and your additional funds added, there's no change here from what we looked at last time. You're still going to have that full-time onsite rep. Rate cap is 10% for year two, 175,000 in annual discretionary funds, 50,000 in annual technology and/or implementation credits, 200,000 in annual wellness funds, an annual COBRA credit to pay WEX, $5,000. You have Virgin Pulse, or which will be Personify as your wellness program, and Visana, the virtual women's clinic, and the 50% participating contract, which is total funds for each year, that includes the first year and every year after that, of $430,000. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Don.
So just before we get into the decisions that we are going to ask of the board tonight, just wanted to open up to any questions or comments on the board.
I'm asking this for the chair. Are we doing it in pieces like we're doing this now or are we waiting until we have everything and then doing everything?
Well, I think we have everything.
Well, there's two other, there's the two other pieces. There's the traditional family piece and there's the health savings account. But I'm ready to make a motion on this piece, if you want this piece done.
Sure.
Right, so I'll move approval of Cigna and keep the caveat of the no new enrollment into their OAP, Open Access PPO plan for the 2526 here.
A second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Ms. Powers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I just say one thing? I just wanted to say thank you to the Garen group, our staff in Cigna for listening to the con...
to the concerns that the board had in trying to minimize the cost for our employees. And I really do appreciate all of that.
Yes, very well done. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So... Next?
Next.
Okay, so the other item that we are looking for board input is to decide if the board wants to continue a board contributing, a board contribution to the health savings account for those active employees that are enrolled in the high deductible health plan. And you'll see there, it's the same options that we presented last week. There's four options ranging from $250 up to $1,000. And the annual cost associated with that is listed in the yellow in the bottom.
Open it up for discussion. Our current is 750, correct?
Yes, for this year it's $750. And employees get that when they are actively enrolled on July 1st, you know, very closely after July 1st, when the new plan year goes into effect. And then for employees that join us throughout the year, they get it in the first of the month after they become benefit eligible, after their benefits go into effect.
So can you tell me, do you think that that contribution has encouraged people to move over to the high deductible plan?
Yes, greatly. In years past, we've done $1,000, $750 this year. I do feel like any contribution towards that health savings account does help enrollment because not only do we educate our employees or open enrollment, but also when they are being hired, not only do we let them know that it's a $0 cost to them per paycheck, but also the school board contributes something to their health savings account to get them started. So it gives them a little bit of something, and then we highly encourage them to continue their own savings into that account through automatic payroll deductions when they enroll in Bentec.
So I'm all for continuing to make a contribution to the HSA. I guess I would look to the superintendent and Carter and ask the dollar amount, what, you know, what can we afford? What's that number?
I, I know the discussion that Carter and I had, and it's been a couple of weeks, but we were, we were still at the 750, option three, given the current status of finances and looking for continued deductions.
So do you want, I would make a motion that we continue the HSA contribution for employees at $750.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Dr. Moriarty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Okay.
One more.
One more to go. Okay, the last decision that we would appreciate the board making tonight is, in years past, the context behind this is about five years ago when the, the benefits changed for medical insurance and all lines of insurance from a two-tier system, which was employee plus family, to a four-tier system, which includes employee plus spouse, employee plus children, employee only, and employee plus family. At that time, back in 2020, to help offset the increase to the employee plus family, the board had made a decision to contribute a little bit extra towards the employee plus family. It is a grandfathered subsidy, if you will. We are down to 128 employees that are in that. Just so you know, just for history purposes, when an employee leaves a district, or if they change plans, or whatever happens, they are no longer able to get this. And if they come back, it's, it's not offered to them. So we're down to 128 of those employees that are enrolled in that. And there are three options there that we have presented to the board each of the last five years. With option A being a disc, to no longer offer it. Option B would be a blended tier increase, which is the formula that has been used for the past five years to, actually, maybe for the past like three or four, to go over that, to pick up some of the difference. And option C is if the board absorbs the full increase based on the overall increase to the medical insurance plan, and you have the cost in there. If you decide to go with either option, what it would cost the board.
Ms. Roberts?
Thank you. I'm interested in eliminating the subsidy. We've been doing it since 2020. And I think if we saved the, instead of doing the blended at 367, it would pay for the 321 for the HSA piece.
So I would like to, I, I do think we have to phase this out. I think now especially that we have a really good, pretty good PPO through, with the health savings account. And maybe for those families, if they choose to switch over, that we would give a one time to get them started, maybe $1,000 for those families in their HSA if they switch over to the high deductible plan. Otherwise, it just goes away. So they would get started with $1,000 if they switch. But if they don't switch, they, it goes, it's just gonna kind of...
So you're meaning just these that are getting the subsidy? If any of the subsidy people switch? Not the people who are already in the, not the two that are already in it?
No, just the ones that are families that are getting either the HMO or the other PPO. So they're already getting a subsidy now, or have been getting a subsidy. So if they switch to the high deductible plan, which is the zero cost, well, it's, it's a minimal cost to them, but then to get them started in a new plan that they weren't...
So you can't do that because of the discrimination of treating people in the same class of employees differently?
Well, how, how are we giving them a subsidy now? We're treating them differently now? So...
Because this is pertaining to treating people in the high deductible plan differently? So you wouldn't be giving the high deductible people the same as the other plans?
We're not giving the people in the HMO or the PPO the same now. So... I, I don't...
Sorry, just, just for clarifications and exclude my, exclude my, excuse my allergy voice here, but that discrimination rule is, is specific to health savings accounts. So anything you do in a health savings account, you have to do uniform across all enrolled individuals, and you can't specifically call out a certain class of employees.
But we can do that in the HMO, in the PPO?
Not through an HSA, but you can do it through contributions like you're currently doing. Correct.
So it can't be an HSA? It has to be through a contribution by the board to that policy?
Correct, like a subsidy or something like, like, like that, exactly.
Just how you've been funding it for the past five years, when we work with the Garen Group and Bentec, each open enrollment, we program Bentec separately for these individuals. They have a separate contribution and a separate contribution for every payroll with the payroll department. That's how we allow for them to have a different rate.
Well, and I'm okay with, you know, I do think we need to phase this out, but I do know from a historical perspective why we did it, is because when we went to that tiered system, I want to say, I can't remember what the increase, it's, it is for a traditional family with two parents and children, it is exponentially higher than it was when we made the, went to that four-tiered system.
Right, so Ms. Powers, you're correct. So five years ago, when we went from the two-tiered system to the four-tiered system, the three tiers that experienced a, a decrease, if you will, was the employee only, the employee plus spouse, and the employee plus children tier. The employee plus family tier did have a substantial increase in the per paycheck deductions. And, and the board made the decision to help alleviate that by contributing a little bit extra each, each paycheck towards those employee plus family enrolled, active employees.
Madam Chair? And what did we do last year for this?
Maintain.
You did the blended?
Option B.
My thoughts would be, with the big increase coming, to stick with the blended tier increase, but have this be the last year for it.
Gabrielle, so just so I understand, there is no way to take this 128 people and in lieu of giving them a subsidy, giving them an HSA contribution?
Correct.
Is there a way to give them a subsidy if they move to the high deductible? Like only allow the subsidy at the high deductible level?
So you can do that, it, it just has to be outside of a health savings account. You can't fund a vehicle specific for a population that is not, you know, for the general population in the high deductible. So you can do that through a subsidy, but just not through a health savings account.
It would impact their premium, the amount of premium, so we could give them a discount on the premium that a family pays. So it would basically transfer, if they go to the high deductible plan, that savings that they're seeing now would transfer to the high deductible plan. And it would give them that, that mechanism to save and contribute more to their HSA if they wanted to. Obviously, that's a personal decision, but then they would still get the 750. They just would not feel the impact of that until next year.
Correct. You can essentially contribute more towards the high deductible health plan tiers than you are the other tiers to lower their costs, to incentivize high deductible health plan enrollment, if that's what you're trying to accomplish.
Go ahead.
So the way I kind of envision it, Ms. Powers, is if basically what you would do is only allow an employee plus family prior to 7-1-2020 subsidy for those in the high deductible health plan, and we could note that in the rates. And then any of these 128 that moved to that, we could then create a separate contribution or subsidy, if you will, for those people for, however, if you wanted to do it one more year, we could let them know that.
Well, it could be the equivalent of $250 or, you know, to get them to the 1,000. So whatever that is per, per... So assuming 128 people move...
Right, so there's 128 active employees on it. Five of those are already in the high deductible health plan for the employee plus family. So there could be a potential of 123 moving.
So the 128 isn't the current amount in this plan? It's 125?
Well, if you take a look at that last page, it's, it's 128. It's broken down by, by coverage. So there's five employee plus family prior to 7-1-2020 that is already enrolled in the high deductible health plan.
So our maximum cost, if we contributed $250 to any employee that switches from an HMO or a PPO to the high deductible prior, that was with this prior to 7 of 2020, then it would cost a maximum, if all 123 people moved, it would cost $30,750.
Yes.
That's assuming every single one of them moved.
Yes, correct.
And with the caveat that this would be, you know, that they would know this is the last year and to fund their HSA.
Correct. So basically, we, we have a board contribution towards medical insurance of $6,500, so it would just be $250 on top of that for those 123.
For one year.
For one year. And we would communicate that to all of those 128 employees during our current open enrollment to let them know.
Sure. Ms. Roberts? I'm so confused. Never mind. So, so let me, I, I don't understand that whole thing. So here's, so if we try to say that for these 128 people, which is 123 people, the 123 people, the three people that are not on the HSA, or not on the high deductible plan, if I want to give them an extra $250, I can't do it in an HSA, but I can do it by reducing their premium?
Correct.
And by reducing their premium, it frees up $250. If I give you a $250 reduction in your premium, it theoretically gives you $250 that you could then in fact put into your HSA and make your HSA piece $1,000 to being able to go there. So that's $10 per pay period, pretty much, a little bit over $10.
Pretty much, yep.
With 24 pay periods. So you could do, we could do that and say that the only subsidy available for the families that were in this grandfather group prior to July 1st, 2020, the only subsidy that's available is for people in the high deductible plan, and the subsidy amount would be $10 per pay period. Would that be the way you would?
We would use the, the...
$67.50 they would get?
Yeah.
Apparently you did understand what I was saying.
Yeah.
Because you just repeated every single thing that I just said.
What is this, $67.50?
You can...
Oh, okay.
Our contribution for those employees would be $67.50.
I'm going to follow up on that.
Okay. I did understand that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There's, there's 24 paychecks where medical, where insurance benefits come out. So if you, if you wanted to do $10, it's $240. If you wanted to just make it $250, it's 10 bucks and change.
And dollars and 42 cents?
Yeah.
So if I understand this, the only people that are going to be getting subsidy is leaving this plan. We're not giving any subsidy to people who aren't moving, only the ones who are?
Well, that was my next question to you. The five employees that are currently on the employee plus family prior to 7-1-2020, you might want to just consider offering it to, the same to them. I think that's fair.
I was talking about as a whole, the only people that are going to get an extra benefit subsidy are those who are leaving this plan, except for the five. Right? Right?
Well, the 125 that are receiving the subsidy are the only ones that will receive that extra 200.
If they move.
If they move to the high deductible plan.
If they don't move, they're not getting anything. That's what I'm trying to clear up.
Correct. If they, if they don't move to the high deductible health plan, then that employee plus family subsidy, that goes away. You, you have to be enrolled in the high deductible health plan with your family on July 1st, 2025.
At the end of all of this, there is no more subsidy for this plan, once we get through all of the things that we just detailed.
That's what I'm hearing from the board.
Okay.
Yeah, so we would communicate to that, that to them.
Thank you.
Okay. The other, the five active employees that are currently in there, would you want to offer them the same?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. So do we need to...
So I would make a motion that we... How do we want to say this? That we give a, the family subsidy to, well, let's say, the 125 employees that are currently receiving the family subsidy will be eligible for an additional $250 to their, from the board, for the contribution totaling... for the contribution totaling $6,750 if they choose to move to the High Deductible Health Plan.
Yes.
Ms., Mrs. Powers? Why don't you just say that the only subsidy available for employees and families prior to the 7/1/2020 is with the High Deductible Plan? Because it's the, it's not 125, it's 128.
Sorry, I'll correct that. 128 currently enrolled in the plan that, and, or, not enrolled, currently receiving a family subsidy. So that's my motion.
Second? A motion by Ms. Powers, second by Ms. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. For, approve, and Dr. Moriarty dissenting.
And Ms. Roberts?
And Ms. Roberts, that she opposed to.
You dissented?
Okay.
Three-two.
Okay, three-two. I apologize. Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, so, do we have any public comment at this time? Open to the Board. Anything? No? Okay. With that, this meeting is adjourned.